We will call to order the meeting of the Los Gatos Planning Commission of July 10th, 2013, where we have a roll call, Mr. Poulsen.
Commissioner Seauk.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Erickson.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor has excused abstinence, and Commissioner Birch is currently not present.
Would you please stand and join Commissioner Smith in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The town of Los Gatos and the Los Gatos Planning Commission strongly encourages participation by the public in the deliberations of the planning commission. There are multiple ways for members of the public to participate in the deliberations of the commission. One way is for the members of the public to provide written comments about agenda items prior to the meeting. We always appreciate that so that it can be incorporated in the materials that are distributed to the commission before the meeting. Also, at the meetings of the planning commission, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First is when the, during the public portion of the public hearing for an agendized item. The second opportunity is during the verbal communications portion on the agenda, where members of the public can address the commission for up to three minutes on any topic that is not on the agenda for that evening. If there are members of the public who are present who would like to address the commission, neither of those two opportunities this evening, we would ask that you would fill out a speaker's card, which are located on the back of the benches in the chamber, and pass it up to the staff to our left so that we can properly call on you at the appropriate time. Minutes from the January 24th, I'm sorry, January 26th meeting of the planning commission were distributed, it's actually June 26th, trying to like set us back in time, anyway, let me try that over again. So, minutes from the June 26th, 2013 meeting of the planning commission were distributed to the commission prior to the meeting. Are there corrections to those minutes or a motion to adopt the minutes? Commissioner Smith.
I'll move to adopt the minutes as they are.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion to adopt the minutes as distributed by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Bourgeois. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We have one desk item, which is exhibit, an exhibit for agenda item number three that was distributed this evening to the commission, also earlier electronically to members of the commission. Members of the public who would like to have it, there are also copies of it that are available out in the lobby area. We have no requested continuances this evening. Members of the planning commission also serve on other committees of the town. There was a meeting of the North Forty Specific Plan Advisory Committee since the last meeting, and Commissioner Bourgeois is going to give us a short report on that meeting.
Thank you, Chair Erickson. The North Forty Specific Plan Advisory Committee met on Thursday, June 27th. The goal was to continue our discussion of the draft specific plan, however, we never quite got there. We spent the bulk of the meeting discussing a review of the commercial square footage. It's a very difficult balancing act between residential and office and commercial, and so the committee is wanting to provide a viable specific plan while not impacting the commercial area in downtown Los Gatos, so a lot of the discussion was about that. And also about the phasing of development and making sure that certain elements would be in place, and that we wouldn't end up with half a project built, that doesn't really make sense, so we talked a lot about phasing. And the continuation of the discussion of the actual sections of the draft specific plan will continue at the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Bourgeois. Any questions for Commissioner Bourgeois? If not, we are now at the point on the agenda for verbal communication. If there is any member of the public who would like to address the commission on any issue which is not on the agenda this evening, I don't see anyone coming forward, we'll move forward then. There are no items on a consent calendar for this evening, there are no continued public hearings, so we'll move forward to agenda item number one. That agenda item is a public hearing to consider architectural site application S-12-094, which is requesting approval to demolish a pre-1941 single-family residence and to construct a new residence at 17265 Wedgewood Avenue on a property that zoned R18. Are there any disclosures by a commissioner on this item? Show of hands for all the commissioners who've visited the property. Ms. Mosley, may we have a brief staff report?
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. The site is located on the north side of Wedgewood Avenue, across from the La Rancana Country Club driving range. The applicant is requesting approval of an architecture and site application to demolish the existing residence and to construct a new single-family residence with an attached garage. The applicant is proposing a two-story, 2,843-square-foot residence with a 631-square-foot garage. The residence would have a maximum height of 27 feet 3 inches. While many of the homes in the surrounding neighborhood along Wedgewood, La Rancana, Mulberry, and Laura have been rebuilt or substantially remodeled, this section of Wedgewood has yet to see many updates, and as a result, the proposed residence would be the largest in the immediate neighborhood by both FAR and size. The applicant was, the application was reviewed by the town's consulting architect for compliance with the town's residential design guidelines. The consultant had several minor changes, but was supportive of the design and massing of the proposed residence based on the overall neighborhood and substantial screening on site. The application would include removal of eight protected trees that are of fair or poor condition. The seven significant trees on the, remaining seven significant trees on site will be protected throughout construction, and canopy replacement will be required for the removed trees. Staff recommends approval of the proposed application, and this completes staff's report. We are here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Are there questions of the staff? Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. I noticed that the arborist had recommended that the driveway be shifted to protect tree number two, but I couldn't tell on the plans because there wasn't a final set of plans to us that appeared to show that, so I just wanted to confirm with you that that was done.
From what I saw on the plans, it was, it was, it met the requirements of the arborist, the recommendation of the arborist as far as shifting it.
Commissioner Bourgeois.
I had a quick question about the site plan. Out on site, the setbacks look really tight. It didn't, where the story poles are, it didn't look like eight feet to me when I pasted it out, but looking at the site plans, I see two setback distances. One looks like it's, you know, eight feet, eight feet, one inch, and then there's another one that's about six feet. Is that to the eve of the roof, and the eight foot is to the wall? Is that, is that what that difference is?
Yes, that would be to the eve.
All right, and, all right, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Smith.
I just have one follow-up that I meant to ask you. Has the balcony in the back been removed?
Yes, it has.
What I saw on the plan up here, but I just wanted to reconfirm that I understood that. Thank you.
Other questions of the staff at this time? We'll now move to open the public portion of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to address the commission. So, we'd ask you to come forward and please identify yourself, and you'll have up to five minutes to address the commission.
Hi, my name is Cameron Cheffy, and just recently I bought that property to build a house for me and my wife to live in, and we fell in love with the fact that it was facing the golf course and also the redwood trees in the, in the front were lovely, so we're very excited to get the opportunity to build our new house, and we tried really hard to stay within all the codes and regulations that were provided to us. I talked to the neighbors to both sides and back, some of them are here, none of the neighbors had any concerns, and they're supportive of building this new house. Please, I'm, I'm sorry, really appreciate it to get the opportunity to build a house and join the community in Los Gatos.
Thank you, Mr. Cheffy. Are there questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Smith.
I just have one question. The separate structure that is in the back, on one set of plans, I saw something called storage, so I wasn't sure if you're demolishing that small structure to the left of the house or you're retaining it for storage.
No, demolishing every standing structure in the, in the property.
All right, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Cheffy? Thank you. We would now provide an opportunity for any members of the public who would like to address the commission on this application. We don't have any speaker cards. We would also normally give you an opportunity to address the commission for any further comments that you would have. If not, we will close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if there are comments or questions of the staff or a motion. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I was concerned about the size of the proposal. When I went out and viewed the property, nothing near it is that, is that big. It is true that it may be hard to see it because there are a lot of trees back there, but normally if we look at our definition of the immediate neighborhood, this would not qualify. So, I'm kind of surprised the staff recommends it nonetheless. So, I think it would be nice to add a nice new house there, but I am concerned about the size because it is very substantially bigger than anything near it, and it will simply start, I believe, a cascade of big houses there because they'll say, "If you did it for him, you gotta do it for me." So, I'm throwing that out, hopefully to hear some comments from my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Bourgeois.
Yeah, I shared Commissioner O'Donnell's concern when I saw that how it seems like it's, it's within all the codes, but it's really maxing out that property, and it, and when we, I'm having trouble having it pass the neighborhood compatibility test is where I'm struggling with. And that leads me to my question of staff, because Brown's Lane, is that, is that an official, because that to me looked like a driveway kind of flaglot situation and not an actual street. Is that an actual town street?
No, it's private. It's an easement over those properties.
Okay.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Bourgeois, there's also something which is unnamed to the other side, which is of the same order as Brown, and it's apparently serves the same purpose, it just goes without a name. So, it does have these two streets, and it does have houses in the back of those, whatever they are, paths, streets, private ways. And I don't know how the, I know there's nobody complaining about it, but again, you're going to have this big house, the immediate neighbors are very small, and in fact, until you go way down the block, they don't get big at all. So, what did the staff think about the houses that are down these two non-streets?
As you can see, this is a unique lot configuration in that neighborhood. There's no properties across the street for comparison purposes, so staff did take a slightly broader approach on Wedgewood in, in looking at comparisons, as well as taking into consideration that the lots down the street or in the immediate neighborhood through a building permit process could add square footage up to the similar square footage as they're proposing without any staff discretion of that square footage. So, that's all encompassed in our review process, but we did expand a little bit as far as, as well as really going back to our architectural consultant and asking how he felt about the massing, as well as the square footage issue, and based on his strong support of it, staff did recommend, that's where staff was getting its recommendation.
I'd like to add just a couple of clarifications too. One is that the Brown's Lane, those do have addresses, it's a private street. The other one you're talking about, two parcels over from this parcel is a flaglot, so that's actually just a flag and the houses in the rear. So, that's different than the Brown's Lane scenario.
And this whole configuration was created in the county, so all of these lot configurations and kind of awkwardness was created in the county and annexed into the town.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I'd like to direct a question to whoever in staff should, should answer it. Typically, the, the town architect speaks to the design of the building. I don't believe has any particular expertise to tell us how to apply what we normally apply to the definition of the immediate neighborhood. So, granted that he thought the building was fine, I don't recall his comments about how it complied with our guidelines on the neighborhood. Do you have a recollection that he did?
Staff specifically had a conversation with them. I'd have to double-check and look how integrally he included it in his report, but staff did go back to him several times and discuss neighborhood compatibility, massing, scale, as well as two-story elevations on the sides and things like that.
Can I follow up then? Let me just ask you, how does that fit within our normal application of the immediate neighborhood when we define houses to the east sides? And there aren't across the street, as you say, but there are houses to the left and to the right, which are very small houses. So, how does that fit our normal guidelines?
So, many of the lots that are adjacent to it, some of them either have fences that are completely blocking the house along Wedgewood, and a lot of the ones adjacent to the left actually don't front on Wedgewood, and so it's difficult to provide a neighborhood, to, to compare those as part of the streetscape when they don't really integrate into the streetscape. So, as I said before, staff did expand the neighborhood when we look at the overall context for our recommendation.
And I'll also add that regardless of staff's interpretation and/or the consulting architects, the commission's obviously free to interpret the guidelines as they see fit. This is a challenge because there are some neighborhoods in town that, you know, someone's got to be the first one to come through and propose a second story. We have another application in the neighborhood as well for a second story. It's kind of that first person through the door has to embrace the challenges and given the circumstances of the significant screening and the review with the consulting architect, that's where staff determined that this may be appropriate. However, as I said, the commission's free to interpret that differently.
Commissioner Bourgeois.
In looking at the site, it kind of struck me that this would be a good place for a basement, or, you know, some, pushing some of that square footage below ground, which is kind of the, the purpose of that policy. Was that ever talked about, or is there drainage issues, anything that precludes that from happening?
Staff didn't have that discussion with the applicant, again, based on the, no, I, staff has not had that discussion with the applicant, if you'd like to.
And there's nothing on the site that you know of that would preclude that from happening, like serious drainage issues or?
A civil wasn't brought into the project until the very end, so I don't know if that information is available at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Smith.
The one comment that I do want to make that I noted was that Mr. Cannon's letter was dated January 22nd, and the plans were revised, at least the plans that I have, on February the 4th, and I do think that, that the plans were confusing to me. They were not in a format that I found easy to follow, and I think one of the reasons why we're also struggling tonight is that the schematic of the house is not in its usual more descriptive form for us. You know, we have to root through the information, and I just wanted to make that as a point of fact. And then also, one other comment, and that is that the follow-up conversations with Mr. Cannon, because his letter is dated in January and we're hearing this in July, it would have been helpful, I think maybe there had been a memorandum in here as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Seauk.
Thank you. A question and then a comment. The first question to staff, with regards to the neighbor to the east, 17251 Wedgewood, I know it's a minor residential application, so that won't be coming to us. How far along is it in the process, and is the fact that it's having a second story, is, what kind of review is staff taking with that?
So, it is pending in the sense that they've been given corrections. They are sitting on the corrections until this application moves wherever it's going to go to better determine how they can proceed. There are some difficulties with that site that if it were to come before you, would trigger some right-of-way dedications and create some setback issues on the existing structure that if left out of minor res, aren't triggered, so they're kind of weighing their options based on how this proceeds tonight.
And a follow-up to that is that if the proposed application, again, on the, on the neighbor, that square footage would be similar in size to this proposal?
Correct, just slightly smaller, within 100 square feet.
Okay, and, and then just comments with regard to this application. I share the other commissioners' concerns with just neighborhood compatibility. I guess the, to me, this is a rather difficult one in that it is, because this is an area that has not been remodeled, normally I, I do, I do follow the 2-2-1 guidelines, but in this case, when both neighbors are so significantly smaller, 659, 578, 876, I'm having some difficulty following those guidelines because for me, it's unrealistic to ask the applicant to stay consistent with those square footages, yet I don't know what is considered adequate to say, yes, you're within the neighborhood, but, you know, what's that fine balance between you're staying within the neighborhood sizes versus allowing someone to build a home that is within their desire? That's the difficulty I'm having now, you know, and, and because it, it does not ask for any exceptions, and it is within the FAR, I'm actually leaning towards an approval of this application, understanding everyone's concerns with the existing neighborhood and the sizes there. So, I just wanted to share that with my commissioners, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I understand the difficulty, and I would not try to say that because the two houses immediately to the sides are very small, that this house should be held to that standard. On the other hand, to go to 2,800 square feet and a 685 or whatever it is, square-foot garage, there has to be some limit and some attempt to keep the neighborhood. That neighborhood will, in all probability, undergo a lot of changes if the market stays the way it is. We often inherit bad things from the county, and unfortunately, this may be one of them. I would hate to set this as the floor for all future applications. There's a, that's a busy street, oddly enough. It's two lanes, one in each direction. There's a lot of trees there, it's going to be interesting coming in and coming out of that house. I parked down from it where there's an inset, so you can park, otherwise you can't really park. I'm not going to support this house, I would rather send it back and have it reduced. I, I'm very sympathetic that the applicant should be allowed to build a bigger house, but I am concerned about the size of this house, so I just thought I'd let my rationale, I'd just share that with my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. I guess I would share that. I, I share the concerns, and I'm conflicted, as Commissioner Seauk. as Commissioner Seok is, in one sense, there are no exceptions being asked. But it does seem to me that one might be able to achieve the square footage in another way by the potential of exploring a basement and some other things that one may want to do in that location without making it so dramatically different than the rest of the immediate neighborhood. So.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm wondering about the drainage issue, because the arborist did raise the issue of drainage when she was talking, in her report, when she was talking about certain trees in the front. So when we talk about a basement, we could very well be talking about a drainage issue. And I'm wondering procedurally how we can find that out, since we've closed the public portion of the hearing. And Ms. Mosley, I don't know if you have that answer?
I would suggest that we ask the member of the engineering staff who's here, do we know whether there's generally drainage issues in that section of town?
Good evening. Generally, there are no major drainage issues in this area. There have, we have not experienced any high levels of groundwater for other applications. However, we have not reviewed a SOLES report for this particular project yet. Given the quantities, it does trigger a grading permit, so that would be reviewed during the construction permit phase.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I will make a motion, and we'll find out fairly quickly where we're going. I would move that we send it back to the applicant for revisions to explore the possibility of a basement, to lower the visibility, therefore, of the house as is presently proposed. We can't speculate that there could be some problem with drainage. In fact, I think, to the contrary, that would be the applicant's burden to have shared with us, which, and I don't blame him, he didn't know about this. But I would like to propose that we simply continue this matter for whatever period of time seems reasonable, to allow the applicant to explore how to reduce the bulk mass visually, not necessarily reduce the size, depends on the basement and that kind of thing. So that would be my motion.
I'll take the chair's priority to second the motion, and then to reopen the public portion of the public hearing and ask the applicant to come and give us, do you have, if you can answer the question about how long you might need to explore that option so we could, so that we give Commissioner O'Donnell the opportunity to incorporate the potential of a date certain for when we might continue it?
All right. Thank you. About the immediate neighborhood, I just had a comment that it is true that the house directly to...
Mr. Shafif, we have a very specific question for you, and that is how long you think you would need to do a redesign so that we, so it's about how long, at what timeframe we might reschedule this item?
Redesign regarding adding a basement, or?
Responding to what the concerns that you've heard from the commission.
It's hard for me to say. I mean, if it's just for adding a basement, that's one thing that I discussed with my architect initially, but my family did not like to have a basement, because also, my mother's going to live with us, and she felt that she doesn't want to live in the basement. And the land is pretty flat, so it's going to be really dark, the basement. And because of that, we didn't go down that path. So if the, you know, the only way to reduce the bulk of the project is to add a basement, probably the whole thing's going to be, you know, put aside for a full redesign, and we have to reconsider the whole thing. So I, it's hard for me to say how long it will be if I want to add a basement. Might not even want to, you know, continue with this building and try to find another property.
Okay, thank you. Does the staff have a recommendation about how, when we might?
So you can continue it to the August 28th meeting, should it not be ready. Then we'll just provide a memo continuing it again, if necessary. That will give time for staff to work with the applicant, for them to consider their options and see whether or not they are interested in revising the plans.
Is that date okay with the motion, makeover of the motion?
Commissioner Smith.
I just have one comment that I want to make sure we clarify. We are not requiring a basement. We are suggesting that there be a redesign to look at the bulk and mass of the home, so that if it can be redesigned in many different ways, it does not need a basement. It's just the way it looks now is incompatible, if I understand Commissioner O'Donnell. So I just wanted to make sure we clarify that for the record.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us to continue the item to the meeting of August 28th, and a second from Commissioner O'Donnell, a second from the chair. Are there comments from the commission on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering architectural site application S-13042, requesting approval to demolish an existing single-family residence at 24 Kimball Avenue, and to construct a new residence, and also to eliminate the second unit on that property. Any disclosures from members of the commission? Everyone has visited the property and is familiar with it?
Ms. Avila.
Okay, the property is located on the northeast side of Kimball Avenue, between Cleveland and Prospect Avenues. It is a wooded site, it has two seasonal creeks on it. One is down at the bottom of the site, and the other is just below Kimball. The proposed development is well away from both of these creek areas, and they will not be impacted. The property is 3.65 acres. It is the largest on Kimball. There is one other lot that is a little over two acres. The remainder of the properties in the area are between 7250 and 33,000 square feet. So it is substantially bigger than most of the properties in the vicinity. It is an R1 zone, however, it is in the hillside area. So the project was designed in compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines, as opposed to the residential development guidelines. The project includes the following components: the demolition of the existing improvements, which includes a two-story residence, detached garage, a detached second unit, and a swimming pool. Construction of a new residence and garage. And the net increase in floor area between the existing floor area on the site and what's proposed with the project is about 800 square feet. The total proposed floor area is about 5,500 square feet, which is within the allowable floor area for the site of 6,400. The height has been held to 25 feet in compliance with hillside development standards and guidelines. There are various stepping elements of the house, but no section would exceed the 25-foot height standard. The consulting architect had several recommendations on the project. The applicant worked very closely with their architect and made proposed changes to the plans, which were accepted by the architect. Those include modifications to the garage doors to emphasize the more horizontal forms of the house, and changes to the exterior materials. The original plans had more materials than what you're seeing on these plans, and one was eliminated to simplify it a little bit. Also, some second-floor elements were modified. There's a number of findings that need to be made for approval of the application. Those include findings for demolition of a single-family residence, findings to eliminate a second unit, compliance with the hillside development standards and guidelines in the hillside specific plan, and there are considerations for review of architecture and site applications. Exhibit 2 has draft findings for all of these for you, and staff is available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions for the staff? Commissioner Seok.
Ms. Avila, the question I have is with regard to the second unit. Is the second unit currently a rental, or is it just a second unit?
It is not being rented right now, and the owner doesn't intend to use it as a rental. I don't know what the previous property owners were doing with it. It is approved as a second unit, so it could be rented.
Is it approved as one of our affordable units in town?
At this point, I don't know that it was counted. It's been in existence long enough that our current housing cycle, it would not have been considered. It's been around, I don't think we really considered second units in previous housing element cycles. Now we're looking more closely at those because it could be a more affordable unit.
Okay. So, and just to clarify again, so if it's available as a rental unit, not necessarily being rented, it could be counted in few...
Yes.
Okay, but it's currently not being counted in this current cycle?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So let me ask a follow-up question. So we're, so there've been some revisions to the number of, the counting of the affordable housing unit total in the last two or three meetings of the general plan. So we're sure that this one is not in the revised counts?
We counted units since, what, 2009? Since the last housing cycle, we looked at what had been, what housing units had come online since that time. Since, and so I, this one was predated that.
It would have predated the last two cycles. This, I believe, was legalized in the mid-'80s when there was the grandfathering in of a lot of second units, because currently, you can't have a second unit in the hillside area.
Further questions? If not, we'll invite the applicant up to address the commission. We have both from Mr. Krukschank, who's the owner, and Mr. Colesat, who is the architect. So you can take your choice. We have five minutes between us.
I'm Kirk Krukschank. I'm going to go first, but Gary's going to do the bulk of the talking. I just want to let you know, my wife and I have lived in the area in Saratoga since 1990, been looking for land in Los Gatos for probably 10 years. Found this lot in December, got it in January, hired the Los Gatos firm of Colesat and Associates to help us go through this process. We've had great input and guidance, direction, clarity from both the planning staff and the engineering staff here in Los Gatos. So it's been, for us, a very, very good experience. And we look forward to hopefully getting this house built and becoming members of this community. So with that, let me turn it over to Gary. He can tell you more about the project, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to provide a little more presentation than what Ms. Avila gave you about the house, and talk about some of the issues that you're facing tonight. The, I think the biggest reason, well, the reason why we are here, I believe, is that we are asking to be eliminating the secondary dwelling unit from the project. If this was not the case, we might be getting approval from the DRC. We're happy to be here. We're proud of this project. We're happy to show it to you. But it's really the secondary dwelling unit that never really was in the Krukschanks' plans. They would never intend, they would never rent it, and it hasn't been rented ever since they purchased the property. It's an awkward situation, this house, this property, for a secondary dwelling unit. It's a narrow road that gets up there, and actually, where the location of the unit is now, is pretty awkward to walk down there. Kind of mossy, steep stairs and everything. So it just didn't seem like it was the right fit for this property. So I hope that you can see the reasoning behind that. And then, now that it is a hillside lot, it's technically re-zoned as hillside now, you can't have secondary dwelling units there. And so that's my next thing, that when we purchased the property, when the Krukschanks purchased the property, we met with them, and it's zoned R120. And so there's certain rules, like 30-feet height limits, different materials you can use, different limits, and all that type of thing. We were surprised to learn that it had been a pre-zoned after the 2005 hillside standards as not, pulling it out of R120 as soon as you'd redevelop it. So that kind of made us think twice, because we'd already started some designs with 30-foot height limits. But it was a good thing, because it really brought us into this architectural style, it's this contemporary style, with these flat roofs. The flat roofs are really the only way we can make this building conform with the 25-foot height limits. And overall, with 34 feet, it's all three levels. So, which was kind of a great thing, because that's really what they wanted to do. And it's kind of forced our hand, in a good way, we think. We had a lot of fun designing this building, meeting with Larry Cannon, kind of reeled us in a little bit, which was good. We were all in favor of his, we were all basically in agreement with his recommendations. We cleaned it up and made it even better. And we're continuing to just make minor little tweaks to just, it's never perfect, and we all, we just want to make it perfect. So I know I'm running out of time. I just want to let you know that I'm going to try to do my best to answer your questions, as well as anything you might have as far as the landscape, architecture, or civil, grading and drainage. Neither one of those consultants are here, but I have a pretty good knowledge of the project, and I'll do my best if you have questions in those areas, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there questions for either Mr. Colesat or Mr. Krukschank? Commissioner Smith.
I'll just add one quick question. What do you believe the age might be of that second unit? We know it's in pretty bad condition. I just wonder if you could speculate. I'm 40 years old, 50 years?
Yeah, it could be 50 years old, sure.
And in order to maintain it or retain it, it would require a lot of work. Is that correct?
Significant work. It's not worth saving, for sure. It's amazing that the renters have not, you know, cried to the agencies, hey, you can't rent this place, you know?
Okay. Well, that's, I just wanted to confirm with you the status of it. I did not go down that mossy hill.
We have structural reports that back all that up.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
When I took a look at this property, of course, went up the hill, and when I turned around, came back down the hill, and it appeared to me that the only place you can really see this is coming down the hill. At least, that's my best guess. What kind, if at all, and perhaps I missed it, are you going to do any grading or fill or anything like that on the site?
It's very little, actually. It really kind of hugs the hillside, and it steps down as the hillside goes as well, and it daylights down the hill. We're doing very little grading, but we're improving the access. These driveways are both very steep, and so we're trying, we lifted up the house a little bit, tried to get it closer to Kimball. Kimball does elevate as it goes around, and so it exacerbates the situation, because the higher we raise the house, to make it conform with Kimball and make it easier to come in and out of the driveways, now we're pushing our height limit of 25 feet, not 30 feet. So that's about the only grading we're doing, very, very little grading. We're just retaining a couple terraces down below to create some entertaining areas outside.
Could I follow up? And that sounds fine, but I'm just curious, because when you raise it up, of course, it's more visible when you're up above it. Is there no practicable, easy way to deal with the driveway, other than to raise the house?
Well, we, the only other way to do it would be to have the driveway and the garage raised up and the house not raised up. And that's not acceptable to have a driveway two to three feet higher than your finished floor and come down to your house. It's just, it's not architecturally pleasing. It's not a great idea for grading and drainage issues. And we have, it does work. And we have, it does work. It's, they're under 20% on the uphill side and the downhill side. It's just, we flattened it out. We did do one thing. There is a large horseshoe driveway, large peninsula in the center of the property, and we basically cut that in half. We created a much more park, usable, friendly turnaround and parking area on-site, because right now, there's really no place to park on Kimball. I did the house across the street, that was a previous client project of mine, and it was, it was really tough during construction, and it was really tough, it is tough today, because there's not a lot of parking on the street. And that's one reason why we're, we have a proposed parking space in front of the house in the right-of-way to add some on-street parking.
Thank you.
Commissioner Seau?
Actually, this is a good segue into my next question in terms of construction management. And you have a large lot, so could you just talk about, but to get to the lot, it's a narrow street and it's a busy area, so if you could just talk a little bit about how you plan to, where you're gonna put all your construction workers, where they're planning to park, just talk a little bit about that, so that the residents in that area won't feel that their streets will be clogged up with, with all the construction?
Yeah. Well, no doubt, it's gonna be challenging, that's for sure. When we built the Buie's house across the street, everything came up Reservoir and down Kimball instead of coming up Cleland and up Kimball. It's, you know, you can drive it in your car, your pickup truck, but no cement trucks or lumber trucks are really, they can go up there, they go up there all the time, but we'll have everybody route the other way. It's a much cleaner access. The first thing that we do after we deconstruct this house, we're gonna deconstruct this house by hand, pull it off that way, and recycle the whole thing. We are, we'll create that first driveway pad, we'll rough-cut everything, and so, we'll have a much bigger area on the top of that hill for staging, for materials, those kind of things.
And just another question. I know that there were no neighborhood concerns, at least, that went to staff, but did you have any conversations with neighbors?
Yes.
And if you did, were there any issues that you were able to resolve on your own or any things that might come up in the future for us?
Well, I know that there's one neighbor here. He lives down the street, and I don't know if he wants to speak on our behalf or speak about the project. We talked to the Buies. We showed them photographs. We identified them as the only really impacted neighbor, and we're really not blocking any of their views, especially from up on their porches and from their house. You can just see right over it. And the story polls confirmed that with them, and they're very happy to see that, you know, I was working on the project. The other neighbor to, and you're facing the house to the right, has been elusive. I think her mother owned this house, and I don't know if you can give it to her. Okay, so, so. Everybody's been positive, so, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? If not, thank you very much. We'll now open it to members of the public who would like to address the commission. We have a speaker card from Rudy Rucker.
Hi, I'm Rudy Rucker. I live at 50 Kimball, so our house is actually on Rogers Road, and we look down on the gully behind the house that you want to renovate. And I looked at the plan for the house. It looks, it looks quite nice. I guess my only concern, which probably is not really something that is likely to happen, simply because from my house, the thing I look at is all those trees. This is a very big lot. It's three acres. And the thing I see off my porch at my windows is all the oak trees down there, and it's, I've been there for 25 years, and it's pleasant to look at that. And I've always been anxious that somebody would buy the house and build down in the creek bed or cut down a whole lot of the trees, but I also looked at the arborist's report, and it doesn't seem, it seems like they're making an effort to not overdo the impact, but I just wanted to express that there is a concern with that on my part. And also, another concern would be that they would subdivide it and put up other houses, but that also doesn't seem to be something that's on the table. So, that's all I wanted to mention.
Question for Mr. Rucker. If not, are there other members of the public who would like? Identify yourself, please.
My name is Brian Nieswenger. I live at 149 Kimball, which is two doors up from the proposed project. Today, I came down and looked at the elevations, and they seemed very, very nice, very in tune with what was there, with the exception of the second story, which isn't very obtrusive or anything. And the neighborhood in itself, I've been there 28 years, is basically, as you've seen, if you've driven by it, an eclectic collection of different styles of houses, different size houses. So, this is kind of an asset, I think, to what was there. And also, when you spoke about the second unit, when it was rented, because of the hillside and that sharp corner, if you've been there, it is, has been a pain when there's other occupants there. So, having this new house with off, onsite parking and everything should eliminate a lot of the congestion on that curve, so I appreciate if you'd pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Thank you very much. Other members of the public? If not, we would give the applicant up to three minutes to add any additional comments, if you choose.
We love trees. We love trees. If you took a look at the report, we're planning on, I don't think, taking out six, and there's a ton of trees there, so we want the privacy, and we're with you. So, please, don't worry about the trees. No plan to subdivide, and we think it'd be a great project. We'd like to be your neighbors.
Any further questions of the applicant? If not, we'll club the, close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to the commission for comments or a motion. Commissioner Bouchard?
Just a clarification from staff. So, since secondary units are no longer allowed in the hillside zone, if they were to, just say they wanted to tear that one down and put in a new one, they wouldn't be able to do it. So, the only, the only way they could not have to come to us would be to leave the existing unit as-is.
This is actually not a hillside zone. It is zoned R1, it's still zoned R1. It's not zoned HR. So, based on town code, a second unit is permitted in the R1 zone. So, the unit itself isn't, is permitted. It's not disallowed, because the property is in the hillside area and is bound by the hillside development standards and guidelines. Those are two different things. So, it's not an HR zone where hillside, the HR zone, the RC zones, do not permit second units. The R1 zone on a conforming lot, which this is, does allow it.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
Other questions of the staff? Comments or a motion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
I will make the motion. I will move to approve the project, the Architecture and Site Application S-13042, and in so doing, make the finding that the project is one categorically exempt for the reasons stated in the report and the findings for the elimination of the second unit, which is more completely described in Exhibit 2. And the findings for the demolition of a single-family residence also described in Exhibit 2. Make the findings for consistency with the hillside development standards and guidelines for the hillside-specific plan, again referencing Exhibit 2. Make the findings that the project is consistent with the considerations for the review of architecture and site applications, also Exhibit 2. Approve the architecture and site application, subject to the conditions of Exhibit 3 and the development plans Exhibit 10. So, that would be the motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Sorry, Commissioner Bouchard, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to second the motion. I'd like to add a couple of things for the record. One, just a little more detail on the elimination of the existing second unit. I think it's, it's clear from the data we've been given from staff that housing stock would be maintained. We are actually approving new secondary units at a much faster rate than we're asking, getting them asked to be removed. The owner does not have any desire to maintain the structure as it exists. And I also think, from a hillside sensitivity standpoint, pulling that building out, they're actually decreasing their footprint on, on kind of the hillside slope underneath those oak trees. So, I think they're actually pulling back from that habitat, which I think is, is in the spirit of the hillside development standards and guidelines. So, I'd like to add that, and I would like to just comment that I thought it was a very well-designed, I think it was very sensitive to the site. There's a lot of sensitive resources here, traffic, habitat, creeks, height restrictions, and I thought it was a very, a very well-designed project. So, that's my second.
Other comments from the commission? I'd like to add my endorsement of Commissioner Bouchard's comment. I thought it was an excellent design, very sensitive to the site and to all the considerations in that area, so much appreciated. Other comments? If not, we have a motion in front of us made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Bouchard to approve Architectural and Site Application as presented with the required findings. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are appeal rights. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal the decision to the Town Council. The forms are available in the clerk's office. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing an appeal.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering conditional use permit application U-13-005, tentative map application M-13-001, and architectural site application S, applications S-13008 through S-13011, which are requesting approval to construct four condominiums at 550 Hubbell Way on a property which is zoned RM1220. Are there any disclosures by commissioners on this item? If not, everyone has been to the site and is familiar with the site. Ms. Avila, a brief staff report, please.
Thank you. I just had a resident hand me this letter, so staff has not seen it, and so, we're just gonna pass that out to the Planning Commissioners, so you might want to take a moment to take a look at that. It is from Miraloma Apartments, which is an adjacent property to the site. 550 Hubbell Way is a property located just east of University Avenue. It is located in an area that is predominantly multifamily apartment projects. There are some single-family residences across the street and adjacent to the left, which is west of the site. The rest of the properties have multifamily developments on them. The building on the site was last used as a community center. It is currently just sitting unused, and the story polls have been in place since middle of April, so they've been on the site for considerable length of time to alert people of the pending project. We have a similar project that was approved on Town Terrace, just east of University Avenue. That particular project has three condominium units, as opposed to four, being proposed on this site. This site is quite a bit larger than the one on Town Terrace. There are three components to the project. One is a conditionally use permit application that is required for condominiums in an RM zone. We have architecture and site applications for the approval of the four units, and there is also a tentative map, because a condominium map is required. This is not a subdivision. They will not be subdivided into lots. These will be condominium units with common area surrounding. The reason it can't be subdivided is because then the lots wouldn't be required to be 8,000 square feet. The property is, the density being proposed is just under 12 units to the acre, and the density in this neighborhood and in this particular zone is 12 to 20 units per acre. So, it's at the low end of the density range. There's a number of findings involved with approval of this application, including sequo findings. There are findings for approval of a use permit. There are findings for approval of the density. A project of three units or more required by the housing element, the increase in the floor area ratio, consistency with residential develop, residential design guidelines, and of course, our considerations for review of architecture and site applications. And then, related to approval of the tentative map, the findings in that case are findings that if you can make one, it's grounds for denial. So, the findings for the tentative map are kind of reverse findings. If you make any of those, you should not approve the application. All the findings have been prepared, and those are included in Exhibit 2. And staff's available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Avila. Do we have questions? Commissioner Bouchard?
I know we've gone through this at prior meetings and ad nauseam at some of the general plan meetings, but I want to get our terminology straight a little bit, because they're referred to as condominiums, and their condominiums, first question is, because the plot is not being subdivided, and so, the property is going to be communally owned, but the individual structures will be owned. Is that, that's the only reason why it's a condominium, correct?
Yes, they are, they are detached units, as opposed to being attached. A condominium could be either one. They could be attached units or detached.
Okay, so, there's no, there's nothing in the word or definition of condominium that requires attached versus detached?
Correct.
Okay. On the plans, they're sometimes referred to as single-family residents and sometimes referred to as townhomes. Again, there's no, there's no meaning to those names? Is that correct?
They're essentially single-family homes. If you look at the way they're being built as four independent units, they'll, from appearances, they'll, they'll look like single-family residences. If you recall the project on Town Terrace, there's a unit in front and then two behind. This one has two in front and two behind. Yeah, they look like any single-family home with a garage and two stories, but they, they are not townhomes technically, because they do, they will not have subdivided-owned lots with them. So, they're considered condominium, but yes, they have appearance and operate as a single-family residence.
And is there a requirement?
Yeah, they are airspace.
Yeah, right. Is there a requirement for common open space in a condominium in that definition?
Yeah, that, the town code does suggest 100 square feet per unit for a common area, and these all had adequate private yards, so that is something that could be required that the commission felt was appropriate to do so. Staff did discover that, discuss that in the staff report, that we felt that they all had adequate yard areas that it might not be necessary to have a common area, and that was the way the previous two projects that are condominiums were approved, without any common area.
And then, my last question, if I may. Don't we have, I don't know, I don't know if it's a policy, but trying to, the reduction of curb cuts, I mean, it seems like a condominium where we're having this shared, potential shared space, and we have four separate driveway entrances instead of consolidating those. Was that ever talked about?
Yes, staff did suggest shared driveways. We thought perhaps two driveways would be more appropriate than four.
Yeah.
The owners of the property preferred to keep them separate. They felt it would be less contentious among property owners if they each had their own driveway, and they may want to add further to that when they speak. We can't do a private street, because that wouldn't be permitted, so they couldn't have any kind of private street on there that came in and, you know, fed garages from the rear, for example. So, they do, but they could potentially have two shared driveways versus four individual driveways. That is certainly workable.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'll just continue in that conversation. When I went out and looked at it today, and I looked at the story polling, because there are four separate units, it's rather monolithic. When you look about anything, for example, it backs up to something that's quite high, but when you go around to University, you'll notice that it steps up. This doesn't step up. You've really got four residences, all the same height, bearing down on that street, having four driveways. They're condominiums because really of legal footwork, not because they're really condominiums. I mean, that's great. Being a lawyer, I love ingenuity, but to people who live across the street or down the block, they're gonna think, "We've got four residences, and they're very imposing." The architect, our architect, seems to like this. Did you discuss that with him?
Yes, the consulting architect felt that with the, what he called a preponderance of apartment buildings and the higher-density developments in the area, that it was appropriate. Also, I think he took a lead from the fact that the town recently approved a project on Town Terrace that's very similar. on Town Terrace that's very similar. But certainly the units could be designed in a different manner if bulk and mass is a concern, you know, there's, design changes could potentially be made, that the units don't have to be this particular size because they are asking for an increase in floor area. So, you know, the, the units could be smaller if the commission determined that to be an appropriate action.
Thank you.
Other questions at this time? If not, we'll, we will open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant forward to address the commission and I believe Greg Howell and Gary Spalding.
Chris Spalding. And I'm the architect, the owners are here, if you have questions of them. This is a condominium because you can't subdivide a lot of this size, so the only way to, to have kind of individual ownership is, is to have condominium ownership. If you divide it into four like this, each homeowner has their exclusive, I mean, the building that's theirs that they purchase plus exclusive use areas for the, for the land. So it's, it's very much like owning your own house. And as, as a buyer and as a developer, it's a preferred building type than a attached building for all the obvious reasons of, of the sense of having your own house, not having the, the problems of common walls and noise and, and then all the potential conflicts you get when you live in the same building with your, with your neighbors. So that's, that's kind of the, the reason why we've got this designed like four residences instead of one large building. We, we did, the town did suggest putting shared driveways and were reluctant to do that because it gets you right back to the, to your neighborhood conflict problems that happens when people share driveways and get in arguments about who's parking where and leaving oil stains on the driveway and all that kind of stuff. We, we put the driveways to the outside so that we, we leave, there's, there's, the curb cuts are together, so each one takes up basically one, one curb parking space and there's enough room for three cars between. So we're, we're not, we're not using up a lot of the street parking with this configuration. Also, we put the driveways to the outside to give, especially to the two houses to the, to the north, to give them a bigger buffer to the two single-family houses that we abut to the north. And let's see, as far as the, the bulk and mass, if we pushed them all together, it would be similar, just wouldn't, you know, it would be one big building instead of four similar sized, but without that airspace between them. And also, if, if we pushed them all together, we'd end up with having to have some sort of more of a parking structure type of layout instead of, the garage is kind of dispersed within the project, so it does, you don't get that, that unattractive large parking lot aspect that the other apartment buildings around this have. So all, all in all, I think it's a, it's, it's a nice solution for the density and one that's popular with, with homeowners.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
You'll have a homeowners association?
You know, technically you, you do, but there's, there's no common ground really, so it's a...
I thought a home, I thought a condominium was airspace.
Well, it's, it's, it's defined, so the tentative map actually defines the structures.
It defines the airspace, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's a three-dimensional airspace that, that encompasses the structure.
And the, and the exterior building is commonly owned?
No, not necessarily.
Okay.
If it's, if it's all one building, yes, but when it's separate buildings, then you can do it so that each owner is responsible for their maintenance, for their exterior as well.
So the homeowners association, is there anything that the homeowners share in expenses?
Almost none.
So landscaping, for example?
Would be individuals' responsibility.
It's individual, so if one person doesn't take care of his landscaping, it's just the way it is.
It's like great, living in town.
Right, instead of normal condominium where the homeowners association would take care of the landscaping.
Right, so you're not your neighbor's keeper.
Right, you're a single-family residence.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sayak.
So who would, on the, on the, who actually owns the lab then?
Well, it, it's a condominium, so you buy your share and your share is defined. So technically...
All four of the owners?
All four own one, their quarter share or whatever their percentage is, but their share is, is defined as their piece.
Okay.
Both the building and then the exclusive use area of the outside, that's, that's the part that's within their fence and their driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Spalding, this is a very creative plan. However, my question to you is that one of the things that Mr. Cannon raised was how the, the sightings of the buildings in Town Terrace managed to give some, a view to the buildings in the back. And I'm just wondering if you thought about this, I'm sure you did, and if you could explain to us why that is not possible or is it, and the owner's chosen not to do it?
Actually, the owner wanted to do that and we looked into how we might do that. The reason that, that the big difference between this property and that property was, was that one was narrower and they could not get four units, but only three. And so as soon as you have three, the, the middle, the front unit is, the, the two back units come out to either side and so they're more visible, whereas in this property, unless we eliminated an entire unit, there's, there's no way you can really move them enough from side to side to make, to make the rear ones more visible. Because if I move, I move the front ones over, I have to shift the driveway, which wipes out another street parking space. And then when you get to the back buildings, I have to push the back buildings apart to make the turning area to get into their garages and that pushes them back behind the front building. So it, whatever you do, the buildings end up one behind each other.
Cause and effect.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
And I, and I want to point out also that we were cognizant of trying to keep the curb cuts in such a way that we kept as much street parking as possible. So that's why even on the front units, we've got the driveways pushed to the side so that we have a nice, almost 80-foot stretch of curb without curb cuts.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, thanks very much, Mr. Spalding.
Thank you.
Now I'll open the public hearing to members of the public who would like to address the commission. We have a card from Dennis Moore.
My house is at 550 University, right on the corner. The two concerns I would have basically would be the impact on parking in that area, on street parking. Hubble is actually privately, technically privately owned by those, the four residents on that, on, on Hubble, which means that the parking in front of our, our houses is our parking, which would basically shorten your parking for other visitors and that type of thing. The other concern I have too, and that is that adding 16 more people or whatever to Hubble, we've got a situation as you come out of Hubble onto University, there is no stop sign because apparently privately owned at one time. There is no stop sign and the traffic going by there is not aware of any type of traffic control. Those would be my only two concerns is, is street parking impact and the stop signage on coming out of Hubble. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, we have some, some members of the commission have some questions for you. Commissioner Smith.
You are one of the owners then of the street that you call Hubble Way, correct?
I believe so, yes.
And then are you responsible for the maintenance of that street as well?
Technically, yes.
And so I'm thinking about the entrance into the street is very awkward?
That's on, on University?
From University?
Yes.
And so is that on purpose? It, it didn't seem to town code, which is why I'm asking you this question.
Yeah, I have no idea, to be honest with you. No idea whatsoever.
All right, so what you're, what you're saying to me is that you believe because it's a private street that there, there is no on-street parking in front of the four owners?
On Hubble.
On Hubble.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that from you.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
And the only, and the only other thing would be the public safety as far as the stop sign not being there.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bujoir.
One more question, Mr. Moore. I was going to ask staff this, but since you're here, I'm going to ask you. Is Hubble open all the time? Because I remember there was a period of time when there were planters or something blocking the road from university access.
It's always, it's always been open that I know of.
How long have you been there?
Oh, boy.
Were those...
Probably 10 years.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, the right, the right to pass through there probably has been...
Yeah, it seems to me, I remember temporary planters being placed there for a period of time and I'm just wondering what the status of that was, but you're not aware of any of that?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We have a second card from Elizabeth McCoy. Oops. Ms. McCoy, we would like for you to get up to the, identify yourself and you will have up to three minutes to identi, to address the commission.
Elizabeth McCoy and I'm the resident manager of the Miraloma Apartments, which is directly next door to where this project is going to happen. And I've passed out notices to you, which I will make it briefer because you have the information in front of you. I'm concerned about the street parking also because it's a very crowded street, a lot of apartments and to add all those other spaces, I don't know how we're going to deal with it. I have parking on my property, but there are people on my property who also need some street parking. So on any given night, it's packed with parking. The sound level of the construction is another concern. The Riviera Terrace, which is, butts our property on the east, they've just started construction. Yesterday, they took down all these gorgeous mature trees. Now 11 of our bedrooms have lost their view. They had all these beautiful trees that gave them peace and tranquility at night. What they have now is a parking lot that's under construction and an ugly building on the right. You can't replace trees, they were up about 40, 50 feet up in the sky and come down to this ugly mess. I just had an email today from a woman who's been here three years and she's devastated because she doesn't have her peace and tranquility when she gets home from work, she just has this ugly thing to look at. We're stuck with it. That happened with Riviera Terrace. Now we've got this project starting next door to us. Is this going to bring in construction all weekend? We're getting boom, boom, boom over here, bang, bang, bang over there and we're looking at a year, a year. I mean, are they going to make some considerations for the residents around there and not have construction on the weekends? I don't believe Riviera is going to have construction on the weekends when I talk to Tom, their superintendent. So I just want to put a few of my concerns because my tenants have been through an awful lot, especially this year with the graffiti, pornographic and gang, cars vandalized, bicycles stolen, I mean, it's just been crazy this year. Now we're asking them to put up with all of this construction, trees coming down from Riviera and now these four units going next door to us. So that's my concern, my tenants. They're awfully good people, but loyalty only goes so far, so thank you.
Other questions for Ms. McCoy? Other members of the public who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, we wouldn't give the applicant additional three minutes to add any further comments.
Well, just, just to address Elizabeth's comments, the town does have pretty strict construction start and stop times and, and also how much you can work on weekends and I don't think you're allowed to work on Sundays at all, but the town can fill you in on that. So if, if they are, you can call the building department and they'll assist you. Same with construction parking, things like that. As far as this project goes and how it would interfere with your tenants, I don't think it will much because this is on the far side of your parking lot from the buildings and so it's, it's not, I don't think it's directly in, in the view of your tenants. But of course, there will be construction.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Mr. Spalding, hold on a second.
I just wanted to ask you a question about the street. It was raised as, it seems to be some ambiguity in who's responsible to keep the street, the street up. I assume in doing a title search, somebody knows whether the street is owned by the town or not, but I know when I drove into Hubble today, you have to be very careful because it's very hard on your car. So did you check to see if that, if that publicly maintains the street?
You know, I, I don't know the exact legalities of it. I did ask the surveyor and he, about our ingress and egress rights and he said that the, that this parcel has a easement for ingress and egress across the whole frontage, so I assume that means it's still a private, a portion of that street is still private.
Does easement provide for maintenance?
Could be, depends on how it was written.
Oh, you haven't seen it?
No, I hadn't seen it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Spalding, one of the thoughts I have, just as, as we're hearing from the neighbors, is that actually in your, in the conditions of approval, they do allow construction on weekends from nine to seven. And so I'm wondering if the applicant will consider not having construction work done on Sunday.
Does it really allow?
Well, it's, it's, it's condition of approval number 64.
Nine till 7:00 P.M.?
That's what it says, weekends and holidays. Eight to eight on weekdays and...
They agree, yeah.
All right, so we can have, we'll modify that when we make the motion. Thank you.
Other questions?
Other questions for Mr. Spalding? If not, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to the commission for comments. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Can I ask the, the town, particularly, I think you might be able to tell us, what is the status of that street?
Originally it was a private street. What has happened is from, when you're coming up from Town Terrace, it's been dedicated. So up until this property, it is dedicated as a public street, but past Hubble and a portion of Hubble itself, the property in front of 550 Hubble will be dedicated as part of the parcel map. And then everything going towards university is still private at this time.
I'm confused. When I drove, when I came down to university, took a right turn into Hubble, I got a very unpleasant surprise on the condition of the street. I have a fairly low-hung car. It was a lot of fun. Is the town taking care of the street?
Not, that, that's the portion that's private.
So who's taking care of it?
It's the responsibility of the homeowners.
And who's taking care of it?
Nobody has.
So if nobody takes care of it, we just say, that's too bad?
That's, if, if it's, it's something that we can look into. It's, it's our, it's our intention as these properties get developed to take the right of ways, just at this point, it's not our responsibility as a town.
So, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bujoir.
And to follow up on that, I distinctly remember that road being closed for a period of time with, with planters. And since it's privately owned, do they have the right to do that? I mean, if we're putting in more homes here and that access is cut off, I mean, am I crazy? Am I not remembering this incorrectly?
I can't confirm the planters, but depending on the, if the subject property has ingress, egress rights...
egress rights to university over Hubble, then that would be a civil issue where they would have to make them remove those should that occur again.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Has anybody seen the easement that we're all referring to?
I have. It does not have a maintenance piece to it, but it does allow for ingress egress purposes.
And who's the grantor?
The grantor are the property owners. Each one of them has -- it's a part of the overall development, over the overall units in this area.
So this is a longstanding easement?
Correct.
Benefiting not only this property, but other properties?
Correct.
And you've seen it, so it has maintenance provisions?
It does not. I've seen it, it does not have a maintenance provision.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sayak.
So two questions of staff. The first, remind me again, with this project, will we have right-of-way of Hubble in front of this property?
Yes, that's correct.
We will?
Yes.
We will, okay. And so my understanding now is that from Town Terrace to, I guess, west of this, it will now become town property that we will maintain?
Not to the west of it, just in the frontage of the property.
Just in front --
Correct.
I believe one of the other speakers, though, said that when Town Terrace was redeveloped, didn't we receive right-of-way of portions of Hubble up until this?
Correct.
Okay, so does it now make it continuous?
Not quite. There's a few properties that are adjacent to university that still have not dedicated.
Okay. And the only way to get that dedication is when those properties get developed, those right-of-ways would then fall to the town?
That would be one way to get them.
Okay. So another follow-up to that is, okay, it's a private street. What happens when people complain about access to Hubble? Do we just say it's not our responsibility coming through Town Terrace? What has been the procedure?
This is one of those awkward situations where it unfortunately, because it is private property, there's not much that we can do from a town perspective, other than making sure that the proper -- you know, it becomes more of a civil matter, given that it is easement, ingress egress easements for the benefit of the common properties.
Okay, okay. And one other question of staff. If staff could walk me through again the subdivision map, why do we require to go through -- are we subdividing this land?
No.
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 The property cannot be subdivided because they would not be able to meet minimal lot sizes for these proposed units.
Right, so then why do we need to go through the subdivision map at findings?
Well, it is still a tentative map because they need a condominium map. So they are going to still file a map. So we are approving, as part of the package, the planning commission's approving a tentative map, and then a final map gets done and it gets recorded.
Okay, and then one last question. I'm looking at the findings. I mean, for all intents purposes, these are four single-family homes, yet it does not have the appropriate land that we -- that our general plan usually provides for single-family homes. So how can you make that finding that it's applicable to general and specific plans? Just because of the terminology that it's now a condominium?
It's within the density range in terms of the number of units. The commission has the discretion on the size of the units. If you feel that they're too large or, you know, the maximum number of units we could get on this site, if it was maxed out, would be six.
Would be six, okay.
I'm not, you know, we'd have to get -- make sure they could provide adequate onsite parking and have some minimal open space areas for units and that sorts of thing. But they could potentially put up to six units on this property.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Commissioner Sayak was using the happy phrase, "We have access." If the grantor has granted access to owners of property, why do "we" have access? "We" being the public.
The immediate neighborhood has ingress egress access. It's not access for every -- for somebody just driving through.
Like me today.
Correct.
I shouldn't have been on that street.
Technically, the way the easement document is written, that's correct.
This is crazy.
Mr. Paulson.
I don't know if this is going to help or hurt, but if you go to Exhibit 1, you'll see Town Terrace, and then it comes into Avery Lane. And Maz, please feel free to correct me if I go astray. As you go in Avery Lane, at some point, it becomes Hubble Way. Up to the subject property where it's black, you can see there's no real road right-of-way through those parcels, except for there's this little leg in front of the applicant's parcel, so that will also be dedicated. And those other three properties come forward. Should they come forward to redevelop, then those same legs would get dedicated all the way out to university. And so that would complete the right-of-way and public ownership.
Let me ask you this. You have island, education, responsibility, and public responsibility on the island.
The island would be the town's responsibility.
It's not an island.
It is, right here.
Have to pave and take care of a portion of this road.
That is possible.
You're right. Thank you.
Are there further questions of staff? Are there further comments from the commission? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I have never seen something quite like this. It is fairly apparent that the use of a condominium here is not in the spirit of condominium. It is in a device to allow a density here and a bulk and size in an island of property which has no maintenance getting in and getting out. We have to make certain findings on a number of things, and I don't see how we can make those findings. And for example, on the subdivision map act, as was pointed out to us, unless you can make all those findings, you can't approve the tentative map. And certainly, when C says the site is not physically suitable for the type of development, and D, the site is not physically suitable for the proposed density of development, I find it a little difficult to see how one could make those findings. And the conditional use permit, when you look at 1, which is the proposed uses of the property are essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, in that the development of the property will provide new housing units, at what cost, I guess, and then 2, is the proposed use will not impair the integrity or character of the zone. So I don't know why we would approve a project now that has the street access that this has, nor do I know why we would want the bulk, mass, and density and access. So I ask those questions because maybe I'm missing something.
I would just add to Commissioner O'Donnell's comment. If I look at the staff report, number one, under the required findings for density, the first one says, "The use will be adequately accommodated by streets serving development to its existing configuration." I won't read the rest of it. That would be difficult for me to see how this was accomplishing that. Commissioner Roushaw.
I am all for being -- this is a transition lot from single-family homes on one side to higher-density developments on the other side. So I am all for being creative in trying to make that transition a little more elegantly than having just an abrupt transition from one to the other. And that's why I think the property on Town Terrace got approved, because we saw it as a stepping stone from nice, single-family residents to kind of your more, your older block, multi-residence housing. So I think I would be open to something creative here. But this, to me, this seems like, I mean, they've pretty much stated, they want single-family homes, but our codes don't -- we can't subdivide it and provide the lot coverage for that type of unit, and so this is a creative way to get around that. And that's exactly what it feels like. It doesn't feel like a condo. It doesn't feel like there's no communal open space. There's no shared drive. There's nothing. This is for single-family homes. And, you know, the whole point of us zoning this as high-density residential is to create affordable units. And I don't think -- I think by going with this type of development, we're not going to achieve the goal of the underlying zoning. So I'm with Commissioner O'Donnell on I would have a lot of trouble approving this. So then the question for me becomes, do we send it back? Do we deny? What does the next step look like? So I'll wait and hear comments from other commissioners.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Normally, I would say we could send it back. My problem is, the street is a great mystery, and I think it's a mystery that ought to be solved, and I don't know that the applicants can solve that mystery. I wouldn't have any objection if somebody wants to send it back for a while and see what they can do, but the problems we've identified are, if they can solve that in a couple of months, that'd be wonderful. I just can't see how they could. I would -- what I guess I'm saying is, if somebody wants to move to continue it, I would not oppose that. I, on the other hand, would probably move to deny, but I'll wait and see if somebody wants to continue it.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm actually inclined to continue rather than deny, and the reason is that this is not -- it does not appear to me to be simply an applicant's issue. We ourselves are not, don't seem to be clear about the street situation. And so we're, you know, we're imposing some of that ambiguity onto the applicant. And so I would like to -- I would like to see it continued so that the applicant does address the issues that we've stated, bulk and mass, driveway cuts, et cetera, that we've raised this evening, and that's the applicant's issue. But I would also like to see us, as the town, try and get a little better handle on this street and figure out what's happening. As we were talking about construction vehicles, I'm thinking about them going over the same hump in the road that Commissioner O'Donnell and I, because we drive similar cars, had a similar problem. So I would like to not do an outright denial. I'd like to see this continued and have both of us working on solving some of these issues.
Sounds to me like a precursor of a motion. Commissioner Smith.
And so is there an interest in reopening the public hearing so we can hear what the applicant says? Or shall I just -- I don't want to make the motion if we're going to reopen the public hearing for a comment from the applicant.
I would ask members of the commission if they're -- if we feel we have a need to hear further from the applicant. I don't.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Smith.
All right, so then I will make a motion to continue your application number U-13005, M-13001, S-13008 through S-13011, the location of 550 Hubble Way, in order to give the property owner an opportunity to look at the suggestions made by the commissioners for some of the redesign of the project, and also to give our town staff an opportunity to further investigate and review the status of the street and resolve some of the issues that the commissioners have raised this evening.
Do we have a second to the motion? Commissioner Sayak?
I'll second the motion.
Before we move forward, would staff have a recommendation about what date we might continue it to?
With the way the agendas are looking coming up, the earliest would probably be September 11th.
September 11th acceptable to the motion, to the maker of the motion and the second of the motion?
Yes.
We have a motion in front of us to continue the item to September, the meeting of September 11th, introduced by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Sayak. Further discussion of the motion. All in favor, say aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We have a report from the Director of Community Development.
Very brief report. Yesterday, the DRC approved two agenda items. One was a single-story addition to a property at 111 Andre Court, which is a planned development. That type of project would typically just be a building permit. However, since it was a PD, it required architecture and site approval. The second was for architecture and site approval of a new house at 331 Johnson Avenue. This was a project that was previously approved. The previous owner demolished the house, went through building permits, and then never began construction, so it's been sitting vacant since, and now we have approved a new home on that site. And that concludes report.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any questions from Mr. Paulson? Other matters from other members of the commission? If not, we're adjourned.